To neighbors' lap. I take my dog every day.
All right.
I know.
Five o'clock. Five.
It's like good traffic.
It's five o'clock, let's call the meeting in order. And pledge and flag, all right? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just skipping out.
Oh, I skipped one. Oh, the box is there. Sorry, we gotta make you guys official. Um, it was for the agenda, right? No. Oh, no.
For the election.
Yeah.
Well, it's Charlie.
Charlie.
Um, it's out.
Charlie.
Agenda and me, oh, God, me too. We have to make this official. Just jump right into it. So where do you want us?
Wherever. You guys. Charlie, come right here.
You guys wanna do it all at once?
Yeah.
For summer.
Okay.
Good enough for me. Yeah, Charlie, did you bring a wipe to take the picture? You can do you and I. Okay, okay.
All right. All right, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
I've been elected to the office of Village of Windpoint.
I've been elected to the office of Village of Windpoint.
But have not yet entered upon the duties therefore. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Yeah.
It'll be about three words.
I swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
It will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great to be here.
Now that we're official. Again, it's called a law. I'm here. Her.
Present.
Her gets it out.
You have a present.
Here. Got luck now.
Present.
Turn it in.
Yep.
And you have the big decision. It will be filmed right in your mouth. At this time, if you have any business in speech on any public or private agenda for over three minutes, time extensions are at the discretion of the president. No action can be taken on items not listed except as a possible referral to committees, staff, or a future board of items. I have a list. Jane. Thank you. Hey, the Nerdland should have the email and the other parties. I have two requests for the board today that are in here. And I'll take the second one first because there were some emails that went around on it. So it's pretty simple. And it's all related to the, you know, Facebook camera. Yes.
Okay.
The link. And so this, um, the second request was that, um, our question was, will the four mile road project dictate what will happen on Lighthouse and Three Mile? And feedback from Carmen and Travis in email was that, know that with each phase of the project, we'll start with a clean slate and look at the specific requirements and make a plan for there. So that was good. So what we'd like to ask for is an official communication from the board to that effect. You know, because all those center business lights, they all say, you know, why don't you just have an email? You want an official communication?
Why would we do that?
Why would you do that?
Why would we do that? Make a decision. Sorry, this was a trial.
Just let Leonard go. Okay. Let you go. What I'll say is that if, uh, if there's, um, an objection to doing that, then we're looking for an opportunity now to make comments on the four mile project. So we're just asking for one or the other. Having an opportunity to provide feedback and input on the four mile project as it might affect the full project or an understanding that it won't affect the rest of the project. So that's the request. And then, you know, it may be complicated. So then, if then we're asking, and I don't know if I really asked for this, but that it be referred to an agenda of the board meeting so that you can discuss it. We can hear the discussion and the conclusion. You know, I'm not sure how to go about getting a response on the request. So if that's referring it to an agenda of a future meeting. But that's the request, either to know four mile isn't gonna redefine Lighthouse and Three Mile or have an opportunity to provide input on the four mile project as it could define what Lighthouse and Three Mile is. And then the second, uh, the other part of the request is relating to, we're asking for, what I recall, is for, um, an executive summary of this capital improvement project to be posted and available for residents. And, you know, because it's such a large project, you know, we're talking about fifteen million dollars and we'll be debt for the first time. They'll increase the taxes and the rates. And a lot of residents aren't aware of it, that we have some kind of a summer. And I'll mention that Travis gave me this today. And this is a thing of duty. This is a executive summary of the, the proposed general budget calendar, which explains your process and steps for developing a project and a budget getting approved, when that tends to happen, what are the meetings you could go to to understand it? This is a one-page, simple executive summary of that process. So residents can participate in with it. And so we're looking for the same thing on this big project. And I gave an example of, attached from in there of what that might look like. So that's Jane Derenz's executive summary. You don't want me to be using Jane Derenz as I already use in the board. But basically, let's see about, and this is the five year, let's see the investment, let's see the amount of debt we're going after, what's the impact on the tax rate? What's the impact on the water rate? And recognition, these are all estimates at this time. They will increase when we get designs. Basically, everything is in your mind. Well, it's basically the, uh, the two pages that say we discussed the information. That's what we're looking for. That's fine, but we've got the information right here. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Mm-hmm. Any other? Public? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, I think that is enough. All right, so people, April tenth, twenty twenty-five, those four meetings. Everybody has an opportunity to look through them. See anything that, uh, you can watch it through the April tenth.
All good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Say, motion passed. Okay, new business. Jeff on? There is, uh, Jessica. It's all you.
That's a frightening thought. Uh, not much on the, um, update for the month, just a listing of the permits or the issues that were approved by the zoning administrator during March and April. I'll keep doing that every month, so the Plan Commission Village Board will have an idea of, um, what's happening in the village that doesn't happen to come before them. So if you have any questions about anything on the report, feel free to ask. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Right.
To the new plan.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Mission. Perhaps to be here and be back on the short term.
I just got it like thirty minutes ago. So unfortunately.
Uh, review and possibly take action on a, uh, check through thirty-six regarding keeping of bees and chickens to a permitted use. Uh, this is not changing anything, uh, in the ordinance other than rather than a conditional use, it's a permitted use. It does not change any of the requirements. It's still the same requirements. The only thing is, uh, the difference is between twenty-five dollar permit and a three hundred dollar permit. And less steps, but the end game will be the same.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
We can discuss that. When, what's the motion to? Motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the chapter thirty-six, um, changes from conditionally used to permitted use.
In a second?
One second.
Okay, discussion. Yeah.
I told you we were going to, uh, adjust that rate from three hundred.
It takes it down to twenty-five.
Twenty-five, one time.
One-time fee. The. Annual.
One-time renewable.
Um, and the reason it was three hundred before, as was explained, uh, by our zoning administrator, but she's off, so we can't. Oh, no, he's there. Um, is that? Because we can't charge you, it's not a revenue generator. It's what it costs to issue the permit. And it's more steps and we would have to go, it has to go through more steps and it takes more time. And that's, but the end results might be the same. They have to meet the same requirements. They have to turn in the same paperwork and it's, everything's the same. The difference is, is it, it's a one-step process instead of a five-step process.
So is it a one-time?
So rather than three hundred.
One-time renewable.
Right.
As I understand it, if you fail to renew it in that calendar year.
Right. Yeah, we, uh, and renew, I think we have, so. Right. Annually renewed. So you can buy it. I think. So if I incorrect in thinking, I thought for conditional use, uh, permitted was we permit this conditional as we may or may not. I did not read that correctly. No.
Not entirely. So up until November of twenty seventeen, um, what you just described, Ms. Johnson, is correct. Subsequent to Act sixty-seven, there's no functional difference between permitted uses and conditional uses. They all have to be approved. So as President McCullough said, the, the most noticeable change, certainly for an applicant, is they'll pay three hundred dollars for an app, excuse me, twenty-five dollars for an application fee instead of three hundred. But the other part of the conditional use process, which is rather onerous, is it had to go to Plan Commission. Plan Commission had to schedule a public hearing. After the public hearing, Plan Commission had to make a recommendation to Village Board. Then it went to Village Board, then Village Board approved it. So not only would you have to pay three hundred dollars, you have to wait upwards of a month to a month and a half before you could get approved. Um, once this is a permitted use, it's zoning administrator approval. It'll take a matter of days.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Very welcome.
And just so I'm clear, the twenty-five dollar fee is one-time fee. It does renew annually, but there's no fee.
That is at the discretion of the Village Board. Um, the zoning ordinance doesn't set fees. But that was my recommendation.
Pardon me? I didn't read.
That was my recommendation, but the zoning ordinance doesn't set fees. That's specific to the Village Board and the fee schedule.
But I thought we had it written in the reveal. I thought initially it wasn't for the twenty-five. But is that something we have to do a different?
You're, you're. Well, it's twenty-five dollars in the proposed agenda right now. And if you want to make it annually or, um, one time, you can make that in your motion to determine that.
I'm just not clear on what's being proposed.
Okay.
If I could summarize it, President McCullough, then perhaps Plan Commission will have a better idea. So first of all, all options are on the table. The Village Board has the authority to set the fee at whatever is appropriate because this is a license. Um, it's called a permit, but it's actually a license. Um, the most common application fee for keeping of bees and keeping of chickens in municipalities in Wisconsin is twenty-five dollars. Many communities require that the applicant come back on an annual basis and pay that twenty-five dollars again. I don't think that's fair, not only that, I don't, not only is it not fair, it does not provide any benefit. Um, so my recommendation to the Plan Commission and the Village Board would be a one-time application fee of twenty-five dollars. And the only reason they would have to come back and pay another fee would be if they changed the use substantively. They add more hives, they add more chickens, they relocate things in a way that, um, or they let their approval expire and then they have to reapply. So every year, I think we discussed perhaps a January first renewal date. And every year, the property owner who keeps bees or keeps chickens would have to contact the village administrator within sixty days of January first, say, yes, I intend to keep the chickens or keep the bees. There have been no changes since the previous year. It's automatically renewed. So I think that goes to the question, that would effectively be a one-time twenty-five dollar fee so long as they don't change it or let it lapse. Because if they're not changing anything, if it's going the same way, what, what would, what would the legitimate reason be to take like more money? Right?
I think it for my dog every year. Why would somebody have to pay for their chicken license?
Right, so the thing about dog licenses, there's a bunch of, I don't, I don't know enough about it to give a definitive answer, but there are records that have to be updated. There's a bunch of stuff associated with dogs because of the risk dogs provide, for lack of a better word. Um, so again, it's a, it's not, my recommendation would be one-time only, but it's up to the Village Board to decide.
Could we split them out, Jeff? And for example, look at bees separately, then the chickens. And my reason why I say that is you can make a case that bees, you know, we need them. Obviously, they're very distressed, that they help pollinate everything. Or chickens, uh, though I heard somebody whisper, burn food, you know, you may have got a little bit different. And I don't know if you have brain frame in the health department. Again, it's not a lot of money either way, and I don't think we have a lot of people doing it. Doing.
I know one other resident, I'm zoned ag down there, so I don't care about you. I don't care about your rules.
Again, the short answer is, um, the, the Village Board has the authority. The, the review process is through the zoning ordinance only. If there are other permits required under the health code or under any other aspect of the village code, that would be a separate permit. The twenty-five dollar application fee is exclusive to the zoning ordinance. For example, um, there's an application fee to build a house. And that's a zoning application fee. But there's also an application fee for a building permit, and that's the building inspector. So it's, some communities do have multiple fees for these things. I don't, I'm, I just, I don't know that there's a need for that. But if there is, certainly you'd want to have a, a second fee or a third fee or however many fees you feel is necessary.
So right now, really, the motion is to change it from conditional to permitted.
That's correct.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
The fees are outside of the purview of the Plan Commission.
Right. Well, this is the Village Board.
Oh.
We're not, this is the Village Board meeting.
I am so sorry.
That's okay, I know, you're busy man. Um, so if you wanted to do it.
It is your authorities.
All the fees, it's in a later agenda.
We'll, we'll address that here. Uh, the motion is, uh, to change the bee and chicken ordinances from a conditional use to a permitted use. Okay, well, same page. And it was, motion was from Charlie, uh, seconded by her, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That's same. Okay, motion passed. And, um.
Take care. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. You.
Bye.
The, uh, short term rental ordinance, uh, is not back yet, so that is, we're just not gonna do anything on it.
Motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone the, uh, review on the short term rental ordinance.
Second.
All there?
Right.
Oppose? Same. Motion passed. Personal finance entrance, can they, that's the option.
Right. Um, mainly just started looking at, uh, some of the things that staff was bringing in for, uh, sort of next year's, uh, CIP, different little things like, you know, a copier and all that. There was no action taken on that. We, uh, basically just, uh, approved at our level the proposed general budget calendar, which Jane has, which Travis came up with, which I already said, and Travis said that is great. We'd always go on year by year picking dates and things like that. This now just says, hey, the top in blue, we're monitoring the budget every, every month, which is great. And then timing for the auditors, you know, the annual preparation for CIP adjustments, you know, taking a look at year-to-date numbers, getting which department heads for their request for the, uh, subsequent year, uh, review the budget numbers again, refine budget requests, uh, you know, you know, clearly, PFC budget, send recommendation to full board and then present it for adoption. So, uh, that's what we approved, uh, in our meeting, made a couple other nickel-dine things, but this is what we brought to the board. So I'll make a motion that we approve this new proposed general budget calendar for twenty twenty-six and beyond, uh, unless unbended or, uh, new, uh, iterations. Read it.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I'm saying, motion passed. Okay, public works utilities and environment committee, uh, trustee base.
We have, uh, three items on the agenda. The first is a review and possibly taking action on ordinance of twenty-five dash oh five regarding the right-of-way tree language, that's on pages twenty-two and twenty-three of the packet. Uh, the root, under the recommendation orders, there are the actual ordinance, so twenty-four and twenty-five. All three of the items, the second one is in ordinance, the third is, uh, minimum requirements for road construction. These are all being, uh, driven by, uh, work that's underway with, uh, the consultant for four mile road. And so it's trying to lay a consistent groundwork for that. So that, uh, the rules are established ahead of time and like the, the review, uh, by the engineering firm is able to proceed under those guidelines. And so this is about who owns the trees. And, uh, it is talking about, uh, defining the ownership and the maintenance in the public right-of-ways in the trees. And so, uh, I don't know if anyone has any questions on that. I don't know if Scott, if you want to make any comment, uh, regarding it.
Uh, it was just basically about the definition of the tree. So when it comes time for construction projects, wherever they may be, um, and any trees need to be removed or in some, in most cases trimmed up to, uh, accommodate some of the large machinery that is for the project, falls down on who's paying for it. So typically in a construction project, the construction project would pay for it. But you need to notify residents generally, like windmills or whatever. If there's trees that are hanging in the road right-of-way that are damaging cars or trucks as they drive by, they need to address it. So just give better, clearer language in order how to define.
And so this is designed to bring us up to the current, uh, standards, if you will, and then apply them uniformly across the, the, which. Obviously, I'll draft it by council.
Yes, correct.
In the past, hasn't the village been the one, like, if you had trees overhanging, say, four mile, if they were overhanging, we would go trim them, especially because of our large equipment? I'm, I'm just asking.
No, I, I found, uh, a policy that was adopted in two thousand and fifteen that basically said the village, it was the homeowner's responsibility, but the village could remove the tree if needed, if it is dead or whatever the case may be. They gave them time to do it. But I mean, when it comes to, and that's kind of part of the definition of this, is that, you know, some of these trees are pretty large and, uh, the village doesn't have equipment to do it. You know, we don't have anything that can get up there, so we're contracting it all. And that becomes very costly for the budget amount of money that we have to do that. So it was a more of a defining of, like, who's responsible for that. So we do it the right way, that's all.
Okay. So.
But. But letters were sent out to residents, like I saw past documents from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and sixteen that there were letters that were sent out to residents informing them that the tree was, you know, was a hindrance or was a hazard to traffic and stuff like that, and they needed to address them. Gave them like, I think they gave them like ten days, which is kind of ridiculous. But, um, to handle it, otherwise, the village would take over to do it, which would involve probably calling a contractor to come in and take care of it, and then the resident would be invoiced for that.
I'll make a motion to adopt chapter one of this. Uh, ownership and within the right-of-way. One second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Same? Motion passed by one. Um.
Okay, the second item has to do with, uh, the ordinance twenty-five dash oh six, which is regarding water service responsibility for construction. And then, uh, so it's on pages twenty-six, twenty-seven, and the actual ordinance is, uh, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And again, uh, this is bringing it up to, uh, to current day, uh, standards, if you will. And Scott would be able to comment on this as well, but essentially it's covering two areas. One is the, uh, the provision of water, uh, to the residents, and the others, and the stormwater connection. So they're both connections. And who has ownership of those and who, uh, then maintains them. And it just tries to codify that so that it's very clear.
Yeah, so, yeah, so basically, like, typically when you're doing a project, you want to take care of and make everything new within the right-of-way, so, and the utility pays for it. You know, to make it sure that it's all new within the road and, uh, the right-of-way and stuff like that. So, um, when you do, uh, a replacement project, all that is getting repaired back new up to the right-of-way line where the curb stop usually is, or in stormwater case where you cap off the access for a storm line for residents to hook onto to put their sump pump or downspouts to. Um, I, I would say, uh, most, if not all of the municipalities have this designation in their ordinance that defines who's responsible for what. And we're just making it clarified for that. You don't want somebody that may or may not be able to afford it at the time, um, decide that they don't want to change it and then decide two years later, after you put the new road in, that now all of a sudden they want to change it. And now they're cutting into the brand-new road. So you want to take care of all that and keep the road as in best condition as you possibly can for as long as you can. Otherwise, to be honest with you, it'll look like deepwood. If you've all driven deepwood, you can see the trenches that they put in after the fact and how wonderful a drive that is.
So for watering connections, uh, there's a shut-off valve, and that's all.
Yeah, there's a corp, uh, that is attached to the main that is a shut-off and a turn-on, but that is not accessible because it's usually in the road. And then they have what, and then there's a line that runs from the corp or the ma, um, that's attached to the main to the curb stop. Everybody has them, it's a little blue cap that's in the middle of your yard. If you, if it's exposed, um, that would be the, on the onus of the utility that owns it. So if something should fail, something should happen to that area, that would be on the, the utility to pay for it and repair it. Only, only to the right-of-way to that curb stop. From the curb stop to the point of use or to the house, that would be on the onus of the resident. So typically, when you do a construction project, everything gets replaced back new up to the right-of-way, from the right-of-way to the house. We don't have it here, but for sake of argument, if it was lead, that would be on the resident to replace that and put it back, um, as different if they chose to do so. Typically, it wouldn't be part of the project, but we don't have lead here, so.
And the second part, the, uh, the second part of the, uh, equation is the storm connection.
Yeah, so the storm connection, um, what we're gonna start doing as part of projects is where applicable, meaning where there currently is storm line, because as the topography of the land doesn't justify being able to have the ditches drain the water from where they need to go, sometimes areas are just flat and you can't get water from one point to the other. So you need storm pipes to do it. A lot of people have them. Um, we're getting a lot of, uh, people that are asking to be able to hook up to that storm pipe that is in front of their house and instead in having more control. So as we move forward with projects, we will stub a piece of pipe off this, off the existing or off the new, depending if it's new, uh, storm main pipe that would give a stub to the right-of-way line. So if a resident decided in future that they didn't want to look at their black pipe on top of the ground, discharging their sump pump, and they wanted to hook directly to it, they could connect right to there, and then they don't have to worry about going underneath the road or anything like that. It would be right to their property. That's gonna be kind of the, the norm from here on out. We're having too many contractors that are. We're having too many contractors that are just just taking a sledgehammer and pounding a hole in the pipe and sticking their pipe in there.
And the connections are permitted?
Yeah, it's right away, right away permitted, but since they're going to be outside the right of way, there's there will be no need to pull a permit anymore. It already, it'll be outside of it. It won't, there won't be, that won't be necessary.
And then because of the decision to move forward, the geographic information system.
Yeah, all that would be, yeah, all those, yeah, all those, all those spots would be as built it on the plans. And then from the as builds would be entered into the G I S. So if somebody eight years from now, ten years from now decides they want to hook up to it, you know, just look on the G I S and you'll know exactly where it is to the to the inch. So it'll be easy for them to find. That's kind of the basis of that.
Maybe there are other questions, but that is what this accomplishes in terms of standardized both of those. I mean, the only thing I was going to interject is we realize the village aging. If let's say my house, for example, my water line breaks in my yard, that's on me.
Okay, so if your water line breaks and we shut, okay, so this is how we decide if if you have water leaking up out of the ground and you call us up and we come check, if we shut off the curb stop and the leak stops, then it's we determine it's the residence issue. If it's still going, then it's the utilities issue and then the utility repairs it.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes in sections one, two, and three of three, sections thirty four. It's actually the updated so it's an ordinance to repeal and recreate portions of the one point municipal code related to the ownership of utility ladders, does that, that would encompass the whole thing?
You could just say that ordinance number.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those.
The final item is not an ordinance, the first two, or this is a summary and update of what construction material standards and specifications, what we desire them to be. Again, bringing it up to current thinking and standardization. So that like with the four mile project, we're able to work with an engineering firm. So there's an analysis and review and then this is actually used. If they meet the specifications here, it's used for the bid process, what you require, so maybe you would want just.
Yeah, so most of the stuff that's in here is just like minimum standards. This is what the village expects it at least to be, and this makes it an even playing field for all contractors to bid and bid properly on the job and not expect it to be at offering more. They're more than welcome to offer more or something above and beyond what is the minimum, but it's going to be at the risk of losing the bid. So but that way everybody can bid at the same level playing field, that's what it's about. But what it also is about is is about like what the village wants to spend as far as money wise. So like I said in the committee meeting, when they do a road replacement and they start replacing culverts and redoing ditches and stuff like that and culverts underneath people's driveway, they have to remove the driveway. Apron, so to speak. And then this document would define what the village is agreeable to pay and put back. So if somebody has a concrete driveway, or it does the village want to replace back in kind? Or they want to just put it back as asphalt?
And that's not a question, and this I guess we're saying asphalt, we've already.
Correct, yeah, that's, but every year we would kind of like update, so to speak, when technologies come out or, you know, based on the first real major construction project that we do, you find out that something didn't work out quite well and we need to change it, you can, you have every ability to do that. That's why it's kind of not an ordinance, it's more of a policy, correct? Yeah.
Now, with regard to like the apron and the standard, let's say asphalt. You could say anything we wanted to recharge as a as a baseline that that was the minimum.
Yep, if the village decides during that project, they want to go above and beyond and they want to do something outside of what it says on the standard, you absolutely can do so. It's just that when it comes to bidding for the contractor, they're going to bid it back as asphalt. With concrete, obviously, is more expensive. Or stamp concrete.
There were issues like copper pipe first.
There is copper pipe, obviously is a lot more expensive now than plastic pipe. So, you know, we're saying the minimum is plastic, but if the village decides they want to go with copper, they have every right to do so for that particular construction project where.
But of course, it will be reflected in the cost and the bid.
Correct.
So this is designed to get minimal, consistent material standard and specification for the construction.
And it's required for bidding process, so we we are required as a municipality to have this.
I'll make the motion to approve the construction materials standards. All in favor? Oppose? Same. Okay. Public safety and emergency thirty committee. Let's begin.
Exactly, March, we had a request to a permit for the lighthouse run. And there were some concerns by the customer about coverage for not coverage for law enforcement to protect the safety of the runners and participants and the audience. And up to this point, I think that the people satisfied with the the coverage it's going to have and it's recommended that it be approved. So Tommy will give us a lottery on.
Sure, most of the concerns came from staffing and a lack of communication from the the event head. There's severe delays within email responses, vague responses. We finally hashed out the details and we came to a resolution that will suffice. We're going to have four officers on for the event to cover the village of Windpoint extending into North Bay.
We got to make a motion to approve the statement for the lighthouse run. June fourth, twenty five.
One second, man. I have a question.
Okay.
Does this guy pay for last year?
He did not, no, but we have some email communication as of even today, solidifying that and taking care of that. So we're not going to have any issues this year, but we'll see.
Does that mean he's paying for last year?
No, he's not going to pay for last year, but he will be, he's he's still looking into why that didn't occur. But he assured us that he would be paying for this.
First you heard about it?
This is the first thing he says that he heard from. This is, this is the first time that he has heard of that issue.
And it's the same organization, same.
Correct.
How much do you estimate the cost?
It's, they are paying fifty dollars an hour per officer for three hours.
They don't have that much budget of.
I'm sure they haven't.
Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe you should continue to find big criminals.
I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? I'm saying. What's your passes? Please report.
All right, let's get down here, no, it's up there. All right, you'll see, I'm sure you guys all received my email, probably the first time you guys ever seen body camera from one point, maybe. Right, so.
What happened to the coke in the little bag?
Yeah. That's an undisclosed location. A secure location. All right, so I'll try to keep this brief, as I always say. The incident summary list, the first page, same, we're still seeing much like we went over today in our university collaboration meeting at Wingspread. Assisting Caledonia, assisting R A P D and assisting the recent sheriff's office on calls for service outside of the village on the cusp of and sometimes a ways out. We collected our medical, our medical collection box was done. I think it was sixteen pounds medications were collected and those are going to be brought up to the DEA location in Lockshock County. We responded to an increase of some civil disturb disputes, most of them ranging from individuals that were coming back from vacation or long extended vacations and having some disputes, no enforcement action was taken. Like you said, trustee, about the nice traffic stop that one of our officers had on somebody that was already out on probation parole for delivery of heroin, traveling through our village, traffic stop was conducted. A K nine alerted from a different agency and seven point nine grams of individually wrapped cocaine were seized, he was taken to jail. Uh, I'll get to that one here in a second. As you saw in that body camp footage, the Windpoint Police assisted with a vehicle pursuit that started on highway thirty one and twenty first street. And made it all the way up to here with assisting and taking that individual into custody right outside the village limits. We have responded to a certain address and please cut me off if this is kind of an inappropriate time to suggest that that issue. We've responded to an address here in the village eight times over the last month and a half, two times an arrest has been made. One has been a deferred prosecution by the district attorney's office. And then a one actually stuck for a moment and now it went bumped down to an ordinance violation for disorderly conduct. We have exhausted, along with the sheriff's office, the attempts at mediating to individuals that live at this property. So I'm just looking at potential talks and bringing it to the proper committee about a nuisance, nuisance property ordinance proposal, or at least this discussions of, we can always just cite for disorderly conduct. But if we're going to continue to arrest the same individual time and time again, and the district attorney's office isn't going to prosecute for a number of reasons, I won't get into them. For usually uncooperative victim, uncooperative witness. There's nothing that we can do other than it gets bumped down to us to do an municipal ordinance violation. So summons a citation for disorderly conduct. But I would like to, it, the city racing has something similar where we, where they, if they respond to, just like when an alarm fee, you know, if we're going to all these false alarms at a location and it's their properties, the A D T is not, you know, up to speed or something's just not working, or they just keep tripping it or they're out of town. I would like to have something in our, in our back pocket to bring the homeowner, you know, to court, you know. If they're not, especially if they're not able to be cited, but they are allowing this kind of behavior to be conducted on their property, you know, they allow the same individual over that time and time again gets arrested and then.
But if we're seeing scout one, what I would suggest is bring it to Travis for an agenda item on the next public safety treaty. And then maybe we have to tidy it up with language. Possibly with our jury.
So we would work with Eric first on that.
Okay.
And then bring it back. Uh, so that sums it up, you see the calls for service there, the citations and the speed study for last. We had, so we had that notable possession of cocaine. We just had an O W I third offense last night through our village. And you'll see some of the other stuff that's redacted as far as locations and information workbooks. Speed study and that's it for me.
That it? Okay, I was looking through this, I have to mark, that's why, well, I guess it's my turn. Um. I'm lost, yeah. All with few things. Just as an F Y I, next week is the R C I C C on Wednesday, May fourteenth at Union Grove Municipal Center, serve at five o'clock. And they're very prompt, five to six thirty, so if anybody minds I'm going. On Easter egg hunt was great, we had a dozen kids and their families show up and they met up with the Easter bunny. It was not, yeah. They hunted free strikes, then they came inside here, they had treats and activities and whatnot. And so I want to thank Jerry Smith, the Stroll Magazine and Windpoint Community Club and our lighthouse keepers for a successful Easter celebration. The next event sponsored by the Windpoint Community Club will be the Wax and Bill's Fourth of July Parade taking place on Tuesday, July first at the Bill Trane Park. Because of your dog, your bike, your kids, and come on down for a parade around the park, it starts at six o'clock. We will have more information on that. Bill's picnic will be on Sunday, August twenty fourth from one to four P M. We will have two jazz in the park concerts this summer. First one will be Saturday, July twelfth, and the second one will be on Saturday, August thirtieth. We will get the times out, I want to say six to eight, and I honestly don't know the times. Lighthouse character tour is starting June and first Sunday of the month, you can enter October, hours nine, three. Walk up to welcome Howard to ensure spot, please sign up on the Windpoint Lighthouse website. We're in the early stages of setting up a five oh one through C to benefit the lighthouse and other public venues within the village. It's not really a village thing, but I thought it would pass the information wrong. And Charlie's helping with that, so we're trying to get that going. So anyways. With that being said, I will move on to community information. Elizabeth Waterfall did not run for reelection, however, she, she was an integral part of the part of recreation facilities in the lighthouse committee. And in order to maintain continuity, I'd like to appoint her as a temporary non-voting committee member of the P R F L. And do I need a motion for that?
You can make it as part of your whole committee appointment.
Okay, so this is all part of the committee then. And then our gardens at the lighthouse are also an important part of the lighthouse in the Windpoint Garden Club. And the members do a fabulous job maintaining many of them. I would also like to appoint Cheryl Foley as a non-voting committee member to the P R F L. Correct, right. So that is part of it. Here are the committee assignments that I have come up with and this is the chair. If one has them. And I hope you agree with them, I thought long and hard about this, there's a couple little changes I've made. And we do have a new member coming on, I don't know who that person's going to be. And that could change a couple of memberships, but chairs I would like to move the way they are.
A R B's not on here?
Oh, I thought A R B was up to.
Well, we're fine, I'm just saying, I didn't know if it had to be listed as. Or just change.
Isn't A R B current?
It's, if it's not changing, then it can stay the same.
Okay.
So if you're not changing anything, yeah.
Yeah, I only give I, I do, but if I need to change it, add or, I mean. And I hope I didn't mess this up. I try not to overextend anybody. If you want to be on more than two, say the word. But if I have your consent or agreement, I may have a motion.
I have one question. Obviously, you want to hear communication before you do change it.
Thank you. Well, I I took you on only because we were on two others.
That wasn't public safety, no. I was on public safety, no.
Like I said, I'm more concerned about chairs, but if we want to discuss some of the the memberships, we can. And like I said, we're going to have a new member and we can discuss that and put that somewhere. Right, but I'm more concerned about who's running the committee and what's going to be going on because you have some things that we will probably, but I have reasons for why I put people on again. So.
And I see. I'll make a motion that we add former trustee was waterfall and show fully to our tracks, so his lighthouse. That we accept. The attached docket listing of committee positions of the year going forward. Five, two, six.
And this can, can this change after we know the politicians? Yes, that's why I said we might have to do some changes because we don't have work, there are new programs to be. Another second?
Second.
All in favor? Oppose? I'm saying, all right, thank you so much. And review and lots of pick actually. Uh, review and possibly pick actually our day proclamation. Okay, so I saw this one, but it's for Nebraska.
It's a history that it started in Nebraska. I'll make a motion to accept the Arbor Day proclamation.
Okay, should I be reading the proclamation or just? Are we going to come up with our own?
No, that's the standard template that Arbor, Arbor Day Foundation sends out for everybody to do. Part of our Tree City USA obligation.
Okay, and so do we get, is it just obligated to regular Arbor Day or is it going to be different?
Yeah, whatever day you define it as, as we did. Crap, yeah, what day, what day, when was that? Something like that, April twenty-sixth, maybe? It was a Friday, it was a Friday, what, twenty-fifth? Plants of a tree right outside there.
Oh, that was.
Then we, Friday, we gave all seedlings. To residents that wanted.
Wasn't that the twenty-sixth or twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
So. Um, so are we making April twenty-fifth Arbor Day in Windpoint?
We can, it's just, it's going to change. I don't know. It could be, you could do it that way too.
It's just this year.
It's just. Yeah, it's just this year.
This one time thing.
Yeah.
So I guess I don't know what the motion is that we need here.
Just to accept the proclamation.
Yeah. So they, so the Tree City USA people can see it on the agenda. So I can get renewed next year.
Oh, okay. You know, all in favor? That's thing. Okay, motion passes. We have an Arbor Day proclamation.
Before we get into that. Couple of things, budget season's kind of kicked off already. So we're kind of looking over that. I was at the Capitol Connections Day for the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. Um, was a great event, connecting with legislators from around the area. Uh, we're funding a lot of transportation needs and the cost for water mains and the low interest. Clean water loans ran out for the first time in fifty-five years. Um, they were not able to give out those loans for the first time last year. So they're asking for a seven hundred and fifty million dollar increase in the state budget. So I thought that was interesting as we're facing a lot of water issues and relying on that little clean water loan, so. Um, but it was a great event. Senator Vanguard and Representative Cruz were the two representatives I met with. Um, both were in, in our meetings, I met with the staff. Um, and both are, were invited down to come hopefully and tour the infrastructure, come to a meeting and see what's going on in the village and maybe take a climb to the lighthouse. But we'll see if they, they show up, so. Otherwise, everything's going great. Busy in the village office dealing with permits, the permit season gets busy for the village, but. Um, we have the updated schedule fees. Um, for the permitted use of chickens and bees. Said at twenty-five dollars in that motion, if anyone makes it, it's up to debate if you want to make it annually or a one-time fee. Um, I just made it to be twenty-five right now. It will be on the application process once approved by you guys. And obviously the schedule fee will be updated on the website. And there'll be a new permit on the website.
I just think because it's not a permit fee, that it's an actual license fee, that it should be. I kind of, I, I, I do agree and only because. I still think that we should be verifying everything annually because of where things are placed. Health, you know, especially with the chickens, type of the chickens and whatnot. Even if you did a ten dollar renewal, because you've already gone through the, you know, everything with checklist. Don't you have to go out and verify it the first time?
The zoning administrator will have to verify that it's done, but.
Are they just going to?
If there's no changes, he doesn't have to review anything. So that was the reason he had suggested that it was a one-time fee. Because it takes very minimal work to do the, the review of the bee wherever it is. And the processes from what I've understood is it takes a very long time to plan ahead of time to get the bees over to Wisconsin. And if you don't get it approved and you're waiting for a while, your, your chance of getting a bee is slim to none, maybe, or I mean.
In two weeks. The ability to obtain bees will not be possible unless you're driving long distance.
So, I mean, it was to make it easier for the person to just, I mean, if there's no changes, just a flat twenty-five dollar fee and there's not. So that was kind of what I got from the plan commission meeting when we had met with Jeff and Plan Commission. So, but it's up to you guys. It's a policy decision of board.
Yeah, you know, to be perfectly honest with you with Plan Commission, I, I thought it was twenty-five a year with renewal, but. You know, we talked about so many different things. There's, there's got to be contact though. There's got to be contact with the village annually.
Otherwise they have, if they don't renew it annually, then they have to pay the twenty-five dollars.
Then they have to redo it. Still, still.
They're redoing every year. They're just not paying the fee every year.
Okay, and don't they have to start? I mean, they, they can do it anytime before, but they, as long as it's done by a certain date. To renew, otherwise they got to start over and by that.
Yeah, I think Jeff said sixty days.
I, I.
Yeah.
What was your question?
Well, I don't think, we talked about when they can start renewing it because, because of the timeliness of ordering bees. Uh, was that like November? You could start as early as November, December.
You could submit it early.
Well, the, the permitting processes, as Jeff had suggested, is Jan. one to December thirty-one, right? So. Very frankly, I'm not sure why you would, why it's important to actually renew. You get a permanent summit, you know.
License.
He, he's not saying.
License. It's not a permit, it's a license.
It's a permitted activity. So we're going to call it license. Okay, so you get the license. But there's not much, you know. I guess placement of either item, you know, was recommended either a beehive or alternatively a chicken coop. The placement of that might be important initially. And I think, did, we did not adopt any language as to the proximity to property lines, right?
That's already in there, so they have to, that's still in the zoning code, yeah, so. So basically it's just the, I mean, if they fail to renew with the office that they're still keeping bees, that they've already paid the twenty-five dollars. Then they have to pay again within that sixty-day window or thirty-day window that Jeff had mentioned.
So I guess my question is, when's that window?
January one.
Starting January one or prior to January one?
Starting January one.
So is they have January one?
If they already do on January, by January one, then they would fail between that time of that January date to whatever it says on the permit.
Well, December thirty-one would be the drop dead day, right? In other words, unless you renew by December thirty-first.
You're for twenty-six, like I say, yeah, you're, you're good though.
I just want to make sure that that's clear.
It will be in, in the application process, yeah.
You have to renew, you know, you can renew anytime prior to the expiration of your permit.
Yeah. And that will be language drafted by the zoning administrator. So that's staff work.
Do I have a motion?
For one time.
Second? I get these C's and N's. Yeah, all there. All right. All right, they're still, they're still here, so that's good.
So you've gotten the ground rules. It's the same process that we did. November, was it already? Here's your ballot. Randomly select from there. I'll have the chief select randomly again, who goes first, if you want, picking the paper. James? We call James.
So, welcome to Rose Board meeting. So I can trust the, as you're aware, you got an open board position. We have. Our little ground rules here, we, we have some questions that we're going to ask you. And I don't, you don't usually sign it, but. I don't know if anybody has a, any type of presentation they want to make, but a lot down the past, I don't know if you sent anything to Travis. And we don't have a meeting on Zoom, this participating?
No, all three are here. Two dropped out.
Yeah, so we're down to three.
I scared him with the packet. A kidding.
No, but you know, we moved through it. I mean, I would say we moved through it pretty quick. It's six o'clock, you know, it started at five.
So the, the applicant must have received four or more votes just to reiterate that to pass the threshold. So the lowest person, if the person first round does not get the four votes, the board will vote again. There are no secret ballots allowed, so they'll pass the ballots down. And we'll read them off. Uh, it's due to open meeting laws and the records that we have here. And you'll get five minutes to address the board. We'll keep track, so it's a fair split. Um, so we're not paid chicken favoritism here. And then the board may ask five-minute questions as well. They've got some questions in front of them that we've generated before. And that's kind of it. It's pretty straightforward. When we've selected James as the randomly selected person, so. It shows yours.
Good evening, everybody. So my name is Jim Ross Paul. And I sent my email to Travis before my back home. About this, I'll probably set a chance for this, kind of high-level summary and kind of yield back to everybody. Uh, my wife and I live currently over in Windmills, who I'm a reporter. We lived there since twenty twenty. Uh, my wife's a lifelong receiver, resident of Market University. Previous to twenty twenty, I think we were going by some loo things. Um, we've got four kids. Two girls, two boys. Currently I'm a Republican, uh, sort of have public accountants. Tax consultant, if you will. Well, in a previous life, I was in the state development. So I'm familiar with the public-private connections, if you will. Uh, then outside work, I've had various roles either with nonprofit entities or other things outside. So, but a soccer coach, I set up a couple of different charity boards. Things of that nature, but I'm just looking forward to contributing to the community in a way. With that being said.
The question is, do we want to hear from all of our applicants first and then ask questions or how do we want to do this?
It's up to you guys. Policy decision by the board.
You guys.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's hear from them all.
Yeah.
Then we'll ask you direct questions.
Second one. Mary.
Hi, my name is Mary. Uh, we moved Jersey in ninety-two, built our house in Four Mile in nineteen ninety-seven. I have two children that are grown, live in the Milwaukee-Hartland area. Uh, my husband and I recently retired in December of twenty-three. So I'm looking to get back to the community and fill my time with fun things that I'd like to do. As fortunately working and I've volunteered through my. Market Day link, who I probably sell it to Charlie. And she's still team, I remember we were there for several years. My husband and I own a machine shop in the same. I like to say we were mom and pop business, because we were the two people in the office and we pretty much did everything with the guys on the floor and just. So.
I wanted to do it. So my name is Tom Knaus. I'm sure you all got my letter. I've lived in the village since two thousand and ten. With my wife and two daughters, one who graduated from college last year. She's got a job as a nurse, she's now living with her board in the. Fox Valley area. My younger daughter, uh, still went to college, she transferred back home from old player. Uh, she's now attending Target, but she's still at the house. For approximately ten years until last year, I was on the plan commission for the village. So I'm very familiar with the way the village operates. Must admit, I knew I'm the C board because my kids all were swimmers and I was on the C board when they were doing that particular time. I'm a retired detective from the sheriff's department, or investigator they call it, or prosecutor for the sheriff's department for twenty-five years. I retired. Three years ago now, I'm still a sworn law enforcement officer, so I can do side gig for family members, get called in to help. So I kept up with my training. I would, one of the reasons that I submitted my name is I would have. Also serving on the public safety committee. I'm chosen. I, I looked at. I, I found one with the budget yearly, so I know. What the budget was last year and the public safety was like thirty percent. So I had an interest in doing that. I also served on the Deputy Sheriff's Association Board. Uh, when I, when I worked there for, uh, I think two terms and I was a member of our bargaining committee for like twenty years. Cause I'd like to argue with, uh, my good friend Jonathan Telegraph. With us about how much we should compensate it every year. So, uh, I'm familiar with some of the budget processes and submitting. RFPs and we want new things and whatnot. Um, I saw. I know that you have like a comprehensive outdoor recreation plan or you have some hopefully plans for the park. And what's going on in Four Mile Road, both things interest me, which is why. Some of my neighbors and other people in the village reached out to me and asked me if I would come and submit my name. Uh, I made a call to the president, had some questions for her. I served under. Uh, thank you, Mr. Under three, for three presidents to, uh, build that sentence, no longer live in the village. And even more administrative clerks, none of which ever lived in the village, I don't believe. Maybe one of them did, but I, maybe I, there was a kind of revolving door, I feel like, since I've lived in the village. Currently to stay busy, uh, I'm the assistant wrestling coach at nine perfect college. I've also been volunteering as a high school wrestling coach here in the community since I graduated from college in ninety-three. And soccer, swim, uh, other things like that with kids, so. I used to get more involved in the process. One of the reasons I called the president was. My, the plan commission, it used to be, I feel like when I started, we kind of had a set. Schedule of it, we would meet the week before you guys met. And discuss what we needed to, and, um, I don't blame anybody for this. But towards the end, it seemed like we would get an email with like, hey, who's available? And just picking random dates and they weren't working out for me to screw my deal with the, with the wrestling schedule and with recruiting and other things I had going on. So I wanted to make sure that. When I called the president to inquire about the open petition, that we somehow be able to be all or not, that I'd be able to make other meetings. And she informed me that I'd get some second Thursday of every month, so, uh, if I'm chosen, I'll be here. And. I'm happy to answer the questions.
You never got.
I do, okay. Very, uh, if you walk by the house, I live at forty-three twenty lighthouse. Um, the corner of Maryburg and Lightosir on the south side.
You don't have a police, oh, police down there.
He is.
Somebody does.
He acts like he's a police guy, but he's like this big. He's got a small dog complex with any other dog.
Okay.
Yeah. No, no.
Oh, I thought I had met you before, when I was thinking of somebody else.
You know, I was absolutely like.
Okay. So, we want to start at one end and move around.
Well, some of these have already been answered, so maybe we just take a second to go through them.
Yeah, if you want to, yeah, look, you know, you can see if you have your question.
Like number one's been answered by an all three.
You just asked, I guess, the same questions of all three.
Sure.
That might be the best you could do.
Say, how would you address the concerns related to local infrastructures such as roads, parks, utilities that might require significant investment care? And that's the issue at this point in time. Now, how would you?
It's probably fair to go first and then to the last, last time. I mean, obviously, I'm well aware that our water mains are like sixty years old. They're made out of materials that are failing. There was a water main break right in front of my house. They came out and fixed it. I was on vacation. They came out and tried to plant some new grass and make it look nice. That's when I met Scott, I think, for the first time. It has to be done, you know, it's like when you, when you have infrastructure like that that's failing, everybody wants to find water. So, it's something that needs to be done. Hopefully, we can do it in a costly, effective manner, and we can get all the residents to agree.
To the sandbox, to the total amount of debt we've never done, we still have before, so how do you feel about that? Because it's, well, it's with the water.
I know our budget last year was two, was it two million now? Two-point-one million roughly? We collect about half of that in, in, in tech property taxes, and now we're talking about borrowing the last figures I remember, upwards of ten million dollars to complete the whole project. If I if I remember correctly, so I can borrow in ten million dollars, it's a that's gonna, that's gonna hurt. It's gonna, I mean, everyone's gonna have to chip in to do that, but you need running water. So, I just hope that we can do it in a way that all the residents agree to, and we can do it, do it the right way the first time, and that we can all. Yeah, we don't want to do it more than once, right? And we don't want to be back here twenty years from now because of the name of the state.
Don't worry, none of us will.
Probably included, but it's still a game.
The village is a great place to live. I hope it remains that way for current residents and future residents, and I want it to be a safe place to live. So, it's one of those things we have to do. Ms. Paul, how would you answer that question?
I would tend to agree pretty much with everything he said. My concern would be that the residents are informed step by step of what's going on, and that they're allowed to give input on certain things that might change or affect properties. And we all agree we have to have clean, fresh water, so it has to be done. There will be some cost, but I think people weigh the cost of clean water. That is, you know, this project.
That's why I think I would lean towards communicating with the residents of the village, working with the board and the public works department to make sure that everybody can come up with a you know, cost-effective solution that everybody agrees is right that forward. And recognizing that, that, you know, there may be difficult decisions that need to be made by the trustee and board. But, you know, overall, that's what the purpose of the trustee is, because make the best decisions, even if it means, you know, difficult for her. Perhaps unpopular at the time, but you need to be forward, okay, and make sure that Mr. Aspar said, you're making the decision the first time, and we can be better for it afterward, as Charles mentioned.
Now, currently, especially with the Four Mile project, there is a lot of information. And there is a design going on, which is going to be public in March, May, beginning of June. So, there's a lot of public input there, so there's a lot of communication for that. Thank you for your answer. Go ahead.
I'd like to hear from each of you, so we'll go in this one. What leadership roles have you had? Tell me about a leadership success. Tell me about the leadership failure. So, two things. What have you done? What's been good? What'd you learn from that?
I'm the oldest of six kids, so by default, I become the leader of the family. I think kind of a leadership, so leadership success would be by example, I've always been a great student and honest individual. I think all of my brothers and sisters would agree that I am a person of culture and have a decision to make. My brother called me last night at ten thirty. Question about work, and we always have to answer the phones, I always try to be there. So, I think that would be kind of my leadership and leadership success story. So, leadership failure I guess, like as a parent, you, you try to be an example for your, your children and show them the right way, but you know, sometimes they don't always make the right decision, and they're kind of disappointed, it's not the right word for it, but you can just, it, it's difficult to kind of, as a mirror take a hands-off approach at times, so there are certain situations, I think, you know, same from a parenting perspective, that you don't always ever gets my correct decision, but I think letting them learn is also a great skill.
What was reverse order?
Okay, I guess the best leadership role I could have is my husband and I being owners of a small company. And I, basically, my husband did sales and worked with customers, and I did everything in the office payroll, insurance, and I dealt with the personal issues of my employees. And over the years, I had employees, one that called me racist, another one threatened my life. And I was kind of middle person between sometimes employees that didn't get along, so I would have to try to, you know, work that out. Success would be that certain employees stayed working for us. My one failure would be that one employee decided to leave or go somewhere else. So, you do the best you can with employees. It's probably the toughest part of, you know, business. Yeah. Yeah, I'm not going into any more detail.
For myself, I guess, leadership success stories would be when I was an investigator for the sheriff's office. I was the leader of primary on four homicides. One that actually the only, the only one that's ever happened in the village here, since I've been resident, one occurred in the village. All four of those suspects were convicted and are where they should be right now. I felt like I was a leader amongst my peers in the bureau. We worked well together as far as the failure part. You know, coaching for thirty years, I always had a philosophy about coaching kids and tell parents this right away. When we meet, it's not every kid is going to be a Olympic champion, or a national champion, or a state champion, or even a city champion. My philosophy is always just to make every kid who comes out, puts in the effort, be as good and safe as possible to be. Had kids do really good things, but I've had some really good kids that flop too, and so I some of them you know, still bother me to the same justice, because some of them put in the work, did actually right, and
around it.
Sure.
I'd like to get an appreciation for what you individually think are the, the top issues and maybe the top three issues that you think our village is currently facing, and how would you prioritize addressing them? Whoever would like to go first?
I mean, I'll go first. I mean, number one right now, I believe that's infrastructure with the water mains in the village. That's the most important thing, I think, that the process that's being followed is the right process. I think one thing is the people that is really directly gonna affect, it's gonna affect some people more than others, obviously. You know, I said this at previous board meetings I've been at, and even at the committee meeting for I was at last Thursday, and I sit at my house, and I watch kids from Prairie contracted. Some are little, they look like they're like fifth graders to me, run up busy White House Drive every day and kind of crossing my fingers that one of them's second gets stowed by a car, and I don't understand why Prairie doesn't send them, threw in my nose up the bike path, down the safe bike path we have to the park and, and run another way. So, I do understand, like, the, the want for a path, so it's safe. A lot of the residents in the village walk their dogs by me every day and do that, but some of the residents, like in the forty-seven hundred block here, their houses are close to the road now, so I hope we be able to do it, and it's a continuous path around the village. And I just hope that the residents that are really going to be affected more than others we can maybe reach out to them and make them aware of what's going on, because I know Travis is doing a good job keeping up the the website and posting notices on there when board meetings and such are. But in my experience, being on the planning commission, let's be honest, like seventy-five, eighty percent of the residents, twenties of them look at those. They don't know what's going on until it's, until it's a done deal, and then they come here, like with the Deepwood situation we had, we had, I have some planning commission meetings where we had forty residents show up from Deepwood. All forty of them were against what we you know, what was going on over there, and I felt like you know, it just could be better communication throughout the whole process. That'd be the number one. Number two, I got the survey about the parks. I don't know. You know, when you're singing, when you're singing, when you're singing on the stage, they thought you was looking at one person. I used to do it with the jury too. I used to pick out one person in the jury when I testified. But with the park, hey, the park is great. Everyone loves walking around the park. I didn't really understand the whole visual survey or why it came out in that form. And everybody would like to have all these great things without knowing what the cost would be, you know, like, I thought it should be more and more direct. Like, my oldest daughter's really in the special, helping people with special needs. She's like the better of the cameras and Easter seals. Camp and adults for the last two years, kind of the greatest need to let some for special needs kids in the park, like put a swing that you can put wheelchair on some, but like the skateboard park, I said, man, we have one right down on the street, and all that, the only time I ever went there was when some baddies called for service, because kids are getting in trouble down there. Smoking weed or using drugs or getting in fights, so that's like, we don't need another skateboard park in the village, just like three miles down the road in the city. So, the park situation would probably be number two for me. And number three, honestly, would just be, man, the village is a great place to live. I'd like to get to know even more of the residents in the village, and hopefully we can all agree on everything, you know, we're not going all to agree on everything, every situation, but hopefully the communication amongst all the residents, I think, is something that we can improve, so we don't have situations like we had at Deepwood.
So, what do you recommend communication?
I, you know, I just think kind of what's getting at, it's like posting and I'm posting information on the website, and hey, it's your kind of responsibility to go on there and look at it. Like I said, I feel like a lot of the residents, they just, they don't. And if something's gonna directly affect someone, I feel like maybe we need to know, we need to send them something in the mail, or, you know, like people that are going to be directly affected by certain situations, we should go a little bit further to inform them of that.
So, I think the, the top three, right? So, the top three, I think I would echo the road construction and if the concerning everybody is, I think, by the earlier board minutes. Going forward, I think I can spoke to that earlier, kind of, you know, how we address that in the overall plan there. So, and I think communication, that's a kind of part of it, I think I I just think we can do a better job communicating with the village, whether or not that's, you know, we have email, newsletter type thing, or something of that nature to the, to the residents, not that it would be necessarily read, but one option. I know there's a overly large population at any point, so it does make it a little bit more approachable in size, so. And then the third, I guess, maybe dovetails a little bit with the first, but maybe piggybacking on public safety. Walking on White House Drive, it is quite narrow, and there is some sort of path there, so I think kind of expanding the path with road construction would be kind of enhancing my career.
Some of the reasons I like living at my point is I feel safe. I like the parks. I like the trees. So, safety is a big, a big thing with me. I think we're doing great with that. And all of these things with the communication, like you said, I don't know about a newsletter. I don't know how many people are actually signed up now getting newsletters, you know, via email and all that. That might be an indication as to how involved people actually are. People I got, maybe a fifth of the, of the residents that actually want to see them. I would like to say dog park at some point in, in the village. I know it was talked about years ago. Down in the Village Green, put it in the back there. I know there's land around, they would point square possible site if we get that door, they didn't work with that individual. So, the parks and wrecks, the safety, and then obviously the Four Mile Road with the construction and all that, and that work into the the bike path. I walk my dog every day in the village. I take different routes. I cut through Wind Meadows. I go over Three Mile on Lighthouse. I go up to Willow View. I feel very safe the way everything is now. I'm always very cautious going around Lighthouse Drive. So, it would be nice if there was a little bit bigger path there, but I think the residents that are in the neighborhood are aware of people walking their dogs, people walking with their kids to and from their park, and they're very cautious and everything. So, just, you know, keep kind of doing what we're doing to keep people informed about different projects and awareness is good. I don't know if it's ever been discussed, is to the cost to put a speed bumps on Four Mile Road, because of the fact that I live on Four Mile Road. That's where I see the most speed. I yell at people as they drive by, and give them the finger, I yell at them, slow down. And I can't tell whose residents and who aren't. Sometimes I can tell, oh, maybe that's a kid from Prairie School coming home, because they're younger. I can't say for sure. But in general, I, I love the because they're younger. I can't say for sure, but um in general, I I love the village. I feel very safe here and um.
Yeah, I have one more question for three. Are you signing up for the uh notifications?
Yes.
I'm still signing up for the notification.
I don't do that, but I, I mean, I just.
Sign up with.
No, but I don't get like an email. But I don't get the multi-posted contact email, but no.
So right now, when you sign up, it will text you and also send an email if you sign up for it. You could do both or either one.
That's not the communication, it's a thing. Um so. I think this board um is vocal. Uh I think we ask the questions. We don't just remember staff, everything that comes, you know, across us for ordinances and different things like that. Um and we disagree with each other, but we still have a good mutual respect for each other. So I'm wondering how you would handle um maybe a disagreement or a difference of opinion um either in a board setting or a public setting?
Well, I mean. I know um the president, because kids and friends um. I, I, I know. I know James and Dave because they're my neighbors and we always have um different political signs. But uh. Even though we don't agree on uh a lot of things in the political realm, so I don't know, I feel like I just uh would make I I'm sure that I wouldn't agree with everyone on everything, but I I just think that I would take everyone's um opinions uh into consideration and I would vote for what I think was best for the whole community.
Thank you. I don't know what's next.
Um I guess I would just say that I like I like to be fair to everybody and try to treat everyone fair and work through the issues that way. Um some of you are aware of an issue that I had in the village um recently and I worked through trying to follow follow the ordinance to be fair and make sure it was done correctly and accept the consequences of whatever the results were. And uh so I guess that's how I'd work through issues.
I'm just saying, kind of treat everybody with respect, uh try to remain objective and do what's best for the, you know, it's greater good. Or what you view as the greater greater good and and except that, you know, in order for uncrewed people to kind of coalesce, sometimes that means compromising, you know, um so that you can get, you know, collaboration, um future members.
Okay, so we talked about time commitment, so. Time, you know, this this board meets the second Thursday of the month, but um you saw it, you did commit the science. So we also have committees that are pretty consistent on the dates that they need. Um and our committees have three people on, so it's real important that we participate in them and a lot of the work gets done in the committee. It's the hard, you know, research, we work with our staff um and work is set on committees and then comes to the board. And I need to, I'd like to know, are you gonna be able to make the committee meetings, um the board meetings and any other outside things? I mean, we've been busy all day. We started this morning over wing spread with an emergency management uh event um that we did in conjunction uh with the Prairie Store and the same county in Caldonia. Um for for events in the village and for all of us. Um so we've had a full day and I understand people work full time and may not always be able to do that, but the commitment is, are you gonna be able to make these meetings? Um that that's important. So we'll start with you.
Um yeah, I'm I'm retired. I I did join the Windpoint Garden Club.
Alright.
And I had my first pickleball lesson today. Oh, gosh, no. Um but um I so I I have some time commitments that I can work around things. Um. I guess at this point, after listening to these two gentlemen, um that I think that my time might be better served working on committees, not as a trustee, so I'd like to take my name out of consideration. Just, I have, I have no experience in community like this, running a co- community village board and all of that. These gentlemen seem like they've got a lot better background than me and maybe just if I can help on committees.
Okay, before you do that, okay, I, first of all, we don't just arbitrarily appoint people to committees. The committees are trustees, the members are trustees. I have, we have a couple of people that are non-voting members um like with the parks committee because they come over, they do the gardens and we need their input.
Okay.
So that gives them permission to speak, but not vote.
Okay, well, I I guess I meant like with the um working the Fourth of July thing and the White.
Do you want to volunteer with the community club?
Yeah.
I would take that.
No, Rob, I can do that. Point, I would be better served.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you understand.
Yeah.
Madam President, this might be the best decision she made.
Oh, absolutely.
Um the other thing too, I.
Yeah, my wheels turning.
And I called it, um stated, every meeting that we have, um so don't let the attending all the meetings scare me. Every meeting we have is either in person or virtual. We offer both committee meetings and board meetings. So if you're in a ruba.
I have, I have on Zoom.
He gets on Zoom, because, you know, he's retired too. Um so it's not like you can't attend, you're you're just, you're ten virtually. So that I do want to make clear um that as long as we have your face somewhere, whether it's on a screen or in the room, I I do, I, so you, you don't.
I'm still, I'm still okay with stepping down.
Okay, you're gonna stay and watch the rest?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Last chance, it's four bucks an hour.
It's gotta be like coaching where it's like an hour, an hour.
Yeah, we have a position for you, yeah.
Well, the other thing, and I know James.
Right, and that's part of the reason I wanted to point out virtual.
No, but you know, I mean, with the fact that I think the rest, well, not, but the rest of us are retired.
They're all retired.
We, I know my committee, if it had to move, we would move it, you know, because we have some flexibility with the rest of someone, so that's all.
You guys do it all in a day for me.
So.
They are working around my skin.
Uh I could jump in since I I am the, it sounds like the only one full time here. Um. So I I have a bulletproof working phone, so uh the firm that I work for is Nationwide, the team that I work for. Uh the closest person that I work with is in Grand Rapids. So the majority of the time I spend is is in my home office. So as far as finding time, like my schedule is rather flexible. Um that's not to say don't, but I don't have commitments certain one day, I generally do. Um but I I am in the village and around for most of the time, uh my neighbor calls me the mayor of the town. Watch everybody that goes up and down the street. You live on the little dog walking path, so I and uh. So I I see all the people walking by and chit chat with them because my office is right in the front of the house, so I tend to know what's going on. Yeah, I have to cut some rooms and uh like the deep, deep of drive, whatever it's on the back, yeah.
And so. And then you said.
I mean, the reason.
As long as you know the date.
I mean, as long as I know the dates, I guess the committee, I don't know when um like I said, I'm, I think public safety would be my my both, my both sides, because I'm familiar with it, you know, um so I would hope that uh that's the committee, get put on something I'm really familiar with. I'm sure I have another committee that might have more to learn than if I was.
Well, and the the committee chair sets the the dates, that they are um consistent.
Yeah.
They don't change unless they have to for something happens, we need to go earlier or later, but for the most part, you can count on it being that day and that time.
Yeah, we do have family cat um up in Forest County and our internet is not great there, so hopefully uh the committee will do something. I'd like, I'd rather attend in person because, I mean, I could zoom in, but we don't have uh great phone service or internet connection.
Go to the big shot.
Some bars. You know, I I think for the most part, I'm sure there's things that come up, vacations, emergencies that people miss. If uh if I have a kid qualified for the Nationals again next year, I, you know, I might, I'm not gonna skip that. You know, for committee meeting, but um I wouldn't be here unless I was committed.
You asked what you want.
So you've got to ask the financial question. No, no, I'm kind of sort of got that. Uh and a lot, mine in, so my neighbor came to me about three years ago, he moved out of the village and came to me and said, hey, Rob, you know, you seem to think, you know, sort of down the middle or, you know, about everything you care. And I said, no, okay, I'll run because everybody like they're met here and everybody here is taking their time as a resident, but that's why you're here, to uh you know, participate in a lot of people coming for us. Um and you know, uh so you don't always learn stuff right away because, you know, we meet once a month. And you know, unless there's a fire or less Travis needs you, maybe, so it takes some time. So I got to the end of my first two years and, you know, because of the turnover, there were a few of us up here that were sort of like, you know, please, we continue. But we wanted to see it through. So I'm not saying this is a four-year commitment, but think about that. Um and then we have had people who are one-issue trustees. And so my question is, are you here for the whole McGilla or is there a specific reason you ran? And then when, let's say you're in Carmen's committee or you're on Herb's committee, you're gonna just sort of go through the motions. See, I'm getting that. So I guess the commitment, you know, what's the commitment look like for you, you know, to this position?
So I I look at categories myself as a one-issue candidate, I guess, sort of term port, but um overall, I think, you know, that there's a uh an individual responsibility kind of to the greater society. I guess I'd say that's driving my reason for being here. I I think um it's important to look, look at the greater good for everybody. I know it's everything, right? Like it's not always about you and and without kind of the norms and morals that surround this society, I mean. Everything kind of falls apart, right? It takes collaboration, it takes people looking out for their neighbor, it takes you know, kind of someone to take ownership and stewardship of kind of the public resources and that's kind of the the reason I'm here, I think, I don't think it's helped us uh one issue or another. I think I was looking at every issue that comes before the board, it's important, so we just try and work with the invested parties, the areas bring the issue to the board or the board itself to come to a resolution that seems to be the best for everybody.
Well, after hearing you speak, I think the same neighbor is the one that got me involved in the planning commission. He uh sucked me in, but uh no, there's not one issue in particular that um. I mean, I, like I said, I was on the planning commission for ten years. Um I think the village is a great place to live. Um but you know, when we bought the house, I thought at this point, when the girls from Boston get out of college, that'd be the probably downside move. And I've come to the realization now that uh I'm never gonna get my wife out of that house. Probably gonna die in the village. Probably probably ask Dave and Jane permission to throw my ashes off off the pier across the street, um saving a little money on the funeral. Um so yeah, it was definitely not a one thing that drives me. Uh like I said, the public safety committee will be my one of my, one of the reasons, it's kind of in my wheelhouse. One of my bigger interests, but uh anything that's important to the village as a whole, um I I put my mind to. And uh in the past, I've had people come to me and ask me like, hey, would you be interested in my for trustee or had people reach out to me or even had people told me that? I don't know if they did or not, that they wrote me in the past. Um but when I was working, there was just, there was still the way I was playing late enough nights worrying about things. I didn't have anything else on the plate, so. Now I think that uh obviously um something I'm more interested in than something I would probably run for in the future. Thank you both.
I have one final question. So. There's been three opportunities in the last six months. That's my question. Surrounding the board, there's been an open position, which I wanted, but resigned. Um there was an election. Um where you could have gotten signatures and turned it in, or you could have been a writing candidate just by declaring as candidate.
So I I'll, I'll think of, so I actually did confirm myself as a writing candidate and I did solicit those, but apparently it was too late. I didn't realize there was a uh procedure to tell somebody on the Friday before the election, which apparently is case. So I did even back and look, check the ballots. Uh I think I would have a number of writings, but um apparently there, you need, otherwise you're discarded as like frivolous candidates or something.
Is it, it's a signing?
Yeah, there is definitely.
So I I, when I, when I realized it was an open spot, I did, but it apparently was too late.
Okay.
Um I haven't collected the signatures for people for I feel like forever. So they, people always call me like, hey, can you help me get some signatures? Um to be honest with you, it's just uh during the wrestling season, my mind was, the time of the wrestling season and um and you know, I've kind of been very happy with our board, I mean, you guys and the people in the past. And it's not, you know, it's kind of like coaching. It's not something you do for money, it's money. It's uh, it's like man, we should thank you for for your service. So uh you know, I was kind of, even though people have asked me in the past, I've kind of been happy doing my own thing, enjoying my retirement for a few years and doing exactly what I wanted to do, but uh I do have more time. Being retired isn't all that, I'll just say that. It's a lot of the guys that I used to work with will ask you like, hey, how great is it? And to be honest with you, sometimes it kind of sucks. It's uh, you know, when you're used to having responsibility and you go from being kind of someone to nobody, it's uh, it's hard to take.
You're Opie's dad.
It's, it kind of sucks, yeah. Being Opie's dad isn't always kind of.
I guess there's one issue that I think we haven't addressed here is to this uh village, this financial stability. As you know, uh we're pretty much not growing. We have to, we can't raise property taxes. We need to gather the property taxes like this, but the expenses are going up. At some point, we're gonna have to raise property taxes. What would require a referendum? So would you be, how would you feel about supporting a referendum?
Can I, can I just, can I, can I just, but this has not, we have not even talked this far. It's been a, it's been part of a plan by a study. There's multiple options that have been discussed, but we have not discussed the referendum yet. We're not there yet, but there's things we're doing to precaution ourselves to get to that point.
You know, I won't get to the referendum part, but I kind of want to ask you a question without, without, I kind of want to get to your point. Uh nothing is free. And when I was on the bargaining committee for the, for the Deputy Sheriff's Association, I mean, I understand, like Jonathan, uh Mr. Nellie Graves, if he could have got us to work for five dollars an hour, you know, he would have, that was his job as a county exec to do that, but. But he wouldn't have had anybody working for the sheriff's office. We all would have left for greater pastures. And the village is great. And one of the reasons it's great is because our property taxes are significantly lower. Than if I lived on Main Street in the city. Um, so, and I'm, I'm happy with the services I get, uh, for my property taxes. They pick up my garbage every, every Monday. If I have an issue. Uh, I have confidence that they'll respond and, and handle it. And, uh, but at some point, um, things cost money and you're, you're going to have to raise. The rates taxes or raise the revenue to pay for those things like this water main issue we, uh, we have. And, you know, Racine County is one of the only counties in the state that doesn't have, um, accounting sales tax. And they just, they just passed that. I mean, there's things that, um, why we were wanted, the last one to go that route, kind of always followed me. Um, but yeah, I mean. Taxes are going to go up. There is no doubt about it. Nothing's for free and although we want to keep them as low as we can, nobody's going to replace these water mains free.
We have, yeah.
Can I just make one comment? Um, staff is going to be your best friend in all of this. So we have a great team up here. We all get along and we get along with the board very well. I'm very happy with the team I have up here and I'm happy with the team we have here today. And we're going to be your friend. Uh, we want to make the village as great as possible and maintain it as well, the best way. And we love this board. Like, we get along really well. Um, so I'm just going to let you know that we're here for you and to make this position the most comfortable transition ever. I know it's a lot in this package. Don't be scared, but, uh, this, this team is great up here. I couldn't ask for a better team. And I look forward to both of whoever it is to joining, uh, this great staff here too, so.
The only thing that scares me is when you throw those acronyms around. And I know when an R, I know when RFP is a proposal, but when you were talking about your L I T R grant for last week, you're.
You know what you do? You raise your hand.
Like, what the heck?
No, you raise your hand and say, I'm going to all the words when that is that mean.
Why can't we just use request for, hey, they do it in law enforcement, all the two, they call Nick Nick. Uh, there is, it just makes, I'm convinced sometimes people just do that to me.
Do you know what M O U is?
What?
Do you know what an M O U is?
Method of understanding.
Okay, it's a learning, no matter what, it's, it's.
Did I say method? I didn't know.
When I, I, I was asked to run for the board. I was a trustee for a year. And then the president decided to retire. He said, why don't you run for president here, I know? So it, it.
I think that's what, to Rob's point, you know, it's a two-year, but those, that first year especially, you're like.
And, and we have a great board. I think we have a wonderful board and I can't say enough good things about our staff. Yeah, okay. And I, I'm happy to say that, except for Monica, she was already here. Well, she was here, but he wasn't chief. We got, so I think we did a good job. So, okay, so anything last before we start voting?
You know, if you want to say.
No, it's, it's, I, you know, it can be a dark one.
I'm hoping.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, Presidents McCullough, James Westfall. Trustee Manny, James Westfall, Cameron Gaspereau, James Westfall, Robert Love Now, James Westfall, Herb Bagley, Tom Nowes, and the Johnson, Tom Nowes. So it is four to two. Congratulations. So swearing in quickly and make it official. We can, we have to buy for the clerk.
You want to come up here or wherever you want to stand. Wherever you are, wherever you want to do it.
Yeah.
You can read off the sheet.
Yeah, there you go. Uh, to raise your right hand, I, James Westfall, have.
I, James Westfall, have.
Been elected to the Office of Trustees of Village Wing Point.
Been elected to the Office of Trustee for Village Wing Point.
I have not yet entered upon the duties therefore.
But not yet entered upon the duties therefore.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Uh, the set office to the best of my ability.
Well, the set office is to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
If I knew you were wearing those shoes, I'd never wear them.
Okay, we still have, okay, so, let's see, we have, um, Dave.
Yeah, I would be getting in the face if we don't even know, making assumptions there.
That's a good idea.
You know what they say.
I'm going to get an email by inbox tomorrow.
I will make a motion that we receive and file the following reports, village and utility financial reports, April twenty twenty five.
Let's make the motion and then ask questions.
Um, second court report, April twenty twenty five, issue courts, April twenty twenty five, fire department reports, April twenty twenty five. Building permit report, April twenty twenty five, and back to Wednesday, April twenty twenty five.
Yeah, second, okay. Oh, didn't we have a question about that, uh, with the new system?
With the new system, are they able to do that?
We're still not there yet. It's still, we're still in the growing pains.
Right, once the audit is completed, they'll give us numbers to enter into workforce and then at that time.
The whole system.
The whole beginning balances.
In compliance, yeah.
Well, the audit is flat enough, right?
It's done, but what time did we present it last year? I think July, June, July was sometime around there. So audits are getting more complicated. State's getting more picky on things. They're taking longer, so.
Okay. I got a second, um, on this. Uh, the motion was to, oh, is this receiving files? About? I'm staying. Motion passes, okay.
So not seven zero now, or?
It is seven zero.
I didn't catch that. Who motion was it?
Allison, Carmen. Uh, Rob moved adjourned, Carmen seconded, meetings adjourned at six fifteen.
He did. He purposely dragged it on and hit seven o'clock.
Actually, it was six fifty nine, so we didn't get.
And then when he noticed Tommy was at seven thirty, he sped it up. Somebody took a hundred more subs.